Take it to you.
The 14th.
I'll make it. Want me to come back?
We'll put him on.
Is there any need to be done that month?
No.
All right, it's six fifteen. I'll call this public hearing. We have a public hearing first. Okay, you see. I'll call this public hearing to order. This is a public hearing over ordinance number two zero two five zero five one two oh two, fiscal year twenty five twenty six budget amendment and ordinance the town of Lawrence, Tennessee, amend and adopt annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, ending June thirtieth of twenty six. Is there any comments on this agenda item? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing and we will go into our regular scheduled council meeting.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Shane, will you open a sermon for a prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father God, we come to you tonight. We ask that you would just have your will and way and everything that is said and done. We continue to ask that you would bless our town and Lord each one in it. Lord, tonight, would you forgive us where we failed thee and give us guidance to lead and follow better? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ready, welcome to the one. Look at that battery change. Hold on just a second. While he's doing that, uh, new website's open going, so get on town once and look it up. There's still a little bit of tweaking on there, so. It's they've done a pretty good job with it so far. All righty, I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Pastor Mary Williams.
Here.
Councilman Bates.
Here.
Councilman Pierce.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilman Poston.
I hear it.
All righty, any public comments on agenda items on the way? Hearing none. We'll move along to August eleventh, two thousand twenty five council meeting minutes. Y'all have a chance to go over those. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. We'll move along to place report, Chief Hunter.
Please, my. I'm going to go along with the academy on COVID suits. Been on it for nine weeks. Wish them luck in that.
Any questions for Chief? Hearing none. We'll move along to fire report, Chief, if you will.
They're kind of quiet. Things running good. Y'all have a lovely report.
Questions for Chief? Hearing none. We'll move along to financial reports. Statements and city recorder report.
Uh, don't want you have the statements there. If you have any questions, just ask. The only report I've got is, um, our credit card machines. They have upped the fee on those. We're now having to pay thirty dollars a month just to have them sit in here. So we may have to explore another option. So there may be a downtime where we don't have anything, but that's fine. Cause we have to pay for them just to be here whether they're used or not, so.
We have three of those grids, so that's ninety bucks. Plus they get another three and a half percent from the card holder, so.
Yeah.
And we're just wanting to explore our options, see if it would cut out our cost a month at least, you know, and put that just solely on.
They're already charging us twenty bucks a month and just deduct another ten dollars on it two months ago for whatever reason they were there, so. Might be a little downtime if we do find some other options.
So is that ten dollars per machine?
Mm-hmm, three of them.
How does that?
Um, it's called a signal pay. It was done through Wilson Bank is who kind of set it up, so. I don't, I found another option or two, but nothing viable with that, but we probably need to do something, so.
Credit me, I heard ninety dollars and I heard thirty dollars. Which, what is the monthly fee?
There is ninety, there's thirty dollars a month per machine. We have to.
Okay.
The increase was ten dollars.
Yeah, it was per machine.
Okay.
Thirty dollars per month.
Okay.
So.
Like you said, that they charge three and a half percent use it. We don't get anything from them. They're just providing the service, so.
Yeah, of course. More people pay with cards, especially court fines, tickets, things like that.
I think last month we took in thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of payments just on the credit card machine, so they're used, they liked.
What did that turn out to be in, uh, three and a half percent or whatnot, you know?
We had to give that three and a half percent.
I know, like I said, what, how much do we pay? How much do we lose in that three and a half percent?
I want to think it was close to about three grand.
Did they pay that or we?
The customer paid it in the.
Oh, okay.
We don't pay, we don't, we just pay the thirty dollars per.
Oh, okay. I was thinking though, like, uh, if a customer paid their ticket or whatnot, that it cost, uh, the system. Yeah, it was a hundred dollars. We're adding that on to the deal already.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we use all three machines simultaneously?
Um, no, there's, we have one for general fund, sewer and one Michael property taxes. The general fund one is used mainly for tickets for police department and then the property tax and the sewer upfront. The property tax one is not used very often at all, but we sort of pay the figure regardless.
I know if we could use one machine for all three.
We could. We could get rid of, well, we'd have to have a general and a sewer because it's two different funds. We could possibly get rid of the property tax one upfront, but if Lee has property tax, you'd have to get up and going there where Stacy uses to make the payment or give it to Stacy to punch it in, cause none of it's web based either.
And it's hardwired in, so.
You have to actually punch in the number.
Stacy uses hers probably multiple times every hour, several times every hour, so that's why we've got multiple, multiple machines.
Anyway, if we found an option and we're down, then somebody calls you. That's fine.
Any other questions for Michael and financials and city recorder report? Hearing none. We'll move along to new business. First line item business is ordinance two zero two five zero five one two oh two fiscal year budget amendment. This is second reading, passed unanimously. First reading in August. Had a public hearing earlier. No one spoke for or against this amendment. Uh, like I said, we have explained this amendment. It was, uh, pretty much a number not transposed onto another piece of paper. Uh, the compter's office wanted us to clean that up. Wasn't that big of a deal. Passed it, uh. Like I say already, last month, I would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, I've got a motion second. Any of you discussion? Hearing none. We'll roll call.
Uh, Pastor Mary Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty. Thank you all for that. We'll get that sent to the compter's office and get that cleaned up. Uh, second item is a big consideration for sewer plant rehab project. This is part of the ARP, uh, TDEC grants that's been passed down since twenty one. Y'all, we bid out the first one a couple of months ago. It went to, uh, to the, to the pump station down here on Highway fifty three. Uh, we fixing to start that one. This is the second phase of it. We didn't think we would ever get to this part of it. This is the upgrades to the sewer plant. Uh, and if you'll notice in your packets, it's the first one, uh, it's got actually two different bidders, but only one submitted a bid that day. Uh, now we did, there's some preliminary gestimates on that and had our engineer involved in it, and we originally, uh, were hoping to come in about three hundred thousand dollars on that project. As you can see, four hundred and eighty thousand is what, what was bid on it. Uh, with saying that, this, this will cause us to, uh, need about fifty thousand dollars, which we have in our budget. Uh, well, or not in our budget, we have it in our funds. What we plan on doing is accepting this bid, getting it fixed and seeing where we are by the time this project gets done. We may have to make a budget amendment, but we may not depending on how things run in the sewer plant between now and end of fiscal year upcoming. Now, with me saying that, we are getting about a hundred or about a million dollars worth of work and upgrades on the sewer system and sewer plant for basically about fifty thousand dollars local sewer fund one. So, uh, the first part of it was the ARPA allocation that come out first. That was, uh, it, it didn't have an earmark. We could spend it on anything. So we decided to save that money as part of a match portion for these TDEC grants that were coming down the line. Now, if y'all remember, we did do a, back during COVID, we did a bonus for employees. We also took, we didn't think we would ever get to spend all this ARPA money with TDEC, the second part of it. Uh, so we, we paid for the second, what I desire went out of that money, which was, it, it was tax money, but it wasn't all our tax, points of tax money. So we didn't think we'd ever get to this point, but I think we're still good. Like I say, we have the money in the account. It's not currently budgeted. We have, we usually, our, uh, uh, line item for breakdowns in our sewer budget. We usually have to figure that pretty high. Now, with Drew being on board, he's pretty much updated about all he can update. And barring nothing blows up this year, we should be able to take that roughly fifty thousand dollars out of our budget toward the end of the year. Now, I can't guarantee that. Something may blow up tomorrow and, you know, we have to make a budget amendment. But I think you guys will agree, us spending fifty thousand dollars and getting them down hundred and fifty thousand dollars of work, uh, is pretty good, so.
And this will also deplete the ARPA funds, which is what is supposed to happen. So, and this will take care of that completely and wipe it off the books, so. Where did that spend them on the end of twenty six?
Twenty six, yeah.
And those ARPA funds are not showing in sewer fund?
No, we're on money market and we have, I think it's roughly thirty something thousand dollars just in, in the account, uh, but the rest of it's in money market. Drawing interest, I think it's a little four percent.
Yeah, that was some of the money we put on local government investment pool. So that's where the remainder of it is.
And Councilman Smith, I've got a constant, Michael put a breakdown of this together earlier today. We didn't get it in your packet.
And that totally includes both places.
There, with this TDEC grant, it's been really aggravating because it goes through multiple steps. It goes through multiple hands before we can cut and check. It has to be approved. So there is still some outstanding stuff here that has been, has been approved. It's been sent to upcoming development. They send it to the auditor for TDEC. It gets sent back and then we get to write checks. There's a few things that's still out there. Uh, that, that we're not a hundred percent sure. We, we know we're not going to be over that number, but we think we may be a little better than that forty nine thousand dollars.
I can hear that totally off you.
Yeah. So like I say, we may have to, but, you know, anything with sewer can break and hopefully we can get through this year. Like I say, we've replaced a lot of pumps over the last couple of years, done a lot of upgrades. So hopefully, uh, we'll have enough money to do that and we won't have to ask for a, for a budget amendment, so.
And that fifty thousand comes out of sewer?
Yes, sewer only, sewer only. That's just sewer customers. There is no tax dollars that goes towards sewer fund.
What's the completion date of this? If we decided to go with this bid?
I don't know. There's usually what, uh, how many days is that usually? They usually got, you know, a hundred and eighty days is usually the, there's some extension time there for bad weather, things like that. The same company got the first bid, WNO Construction for the fifty three pump station. So what we're figuring is they're going to transition from this pump station and just jump right over to the plant. That project, replacing two blowers, some pipes and putting a new drain bed in, you're probably not talking. If they got decent weather, they don't really have to have decent weather for that, cause they're really not digging anything over there. It's just taking some parts out and putting new parts in. So it shouldn't last too long for that project there. But most of those, most of those bids are usually a hundred and eighty days.
So I guess my next question is, how can we figure it's going to be three hundred and this is where the bid came in at?
Cause we're, it's just a guess.
I, I don't know. I feel comfortable with one bid, cause this may be way out of scope for.
Well, when we started this, Councilman Pierce, we knew that we were getting a very limited amount of money. Uh, bigger towns, say it's Carthage, Lebanon, their projects are bigger, their, their ARPA funds were more. So we knew we were going to get the smaller companies that wouldn't go after, uh, you know, the ten million dollar projects or the Cook Bulls and Lebanon, what their project. Cause they got a lot more money based on, you know, the people. So we knew, you know, the first bid that we did, the fifty three pump station, we had budgeted four hundred and ninety nine thousand for that is what the engineer did. We actually come in at, uh, we come in at four hundred and seventy two thousand. So we did. It very seldom happens that you, you know, you, your estimate is, is that close or come under what the bid price is. And like I said, with one person bidding, you know, it, it's aggravating. With a rebid process, what we'd have to do is go through another advertising time, um, and then of course rebid it and that will probably be looking at another month, possibly two months, depending on when the engineer, we can get it worked in and everything. With saying that, uh, like I say, this is the only bid we did receive. Uh, I would entertain a motion to accept this bid. Is there a second? Motion dies like a second. What's the process now? Do we want to rebid it? This next, it could come back at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, I just don't like making a decision with this much money for one bid. To just like, or down here at the park. Where'd the second come in at?
The second didn't bid.
What I mean, they didn't even offer a bid?
They picked their papers up, showed up and said, we didn't have time. They were interested in what the other company bid was what it was.
Okay.
They said he didn't have time to put the bid packet together.
Okay. I just wondered where that name, why a name's there.
Yeah.
But they picked the paperwork up and just didn't bid.
Yes, yes, they.
So they had the option to give us that bid?
Yes, yeah. They just, they were actually a company out of Knoxville, weren't they? They come down, looked at their plant, took pictures, took notes. Uh, actually showed up on the bid day just to say, hey, we're sorry. We did not get a chance to, to put it together, so. All this is time sensitive stuff right now.
Can we think about this a few minutes and revisit it before the end of the meeting?
You're the boss. You can do as you please. We'll move along to bid considerations for Preston Road paving, paving project. If you'll look in your packets, we'll move, uh, it's the one that's got three.
We'll be four more minutes to approve both of these next month. It was so close to packet time, I didn't have time. They're done, but I didn't have time to put them on my agenda, so the bid opening minutes will be next month.
All right, uh, in your packet, there's a list of paving for Preston Road. We did receive three bids on it. Uh, we bid out this project on Preston Road, three bidders, and Rogers Group was the low bidder. Uh, the bids exceeded the estimation that, that we got from our engineers. Uh, we believe that we budgeted and what we saved with the pipe installs, that, uh, we shouldn't have to do anything extra there. We should have enough money to do that. I did talk to Rogers Group personally. They said that they could get this project done before, uh, winter shutdown, which is, uh, when it gets cold. We don't know when that's going to be. It could be December, it could be October. So Rogers Group come in at two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars and five cents. I would entertain a motion to accept this bid from Rogers Group to pay Preston Road.
And the county, you got the same contractor?
Yes. Uh, on the county side, Rogers Group was the low bidder only at all, so, so.
And they plan to do the same help?
Yes, yes, same. That's what they plan to do. I can't, can't control that.
Yeah, I forgot.
I don't know why they wouldn't, cause most of the asphalt would be coming out of Liberty, so they have trucked it a long way, so I figured they'd probably, that's what the plan is. I'm sorry, is there a second?
Danny?
Okay. Uh, motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll roll call.
Pastor Mary Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries. Who made the first? Was it you?
Okay, got you.
All righty, moving along. The next one is, uh, resolution for the infrastructure planning grant. Okay. We got word, uh, about two weeks ago that, uh, there was an infrastructure planning grant out there. This grant is two hundred thousand dollars max with a five percent local match. This grant is for planning for the future and trying to find the problems that we currently have in our system. Uh, we've met with a wastewater engineer and plan on using this grant to locate any possible leaks or anywhere groundwater or stormwater enters our system. What they do to do that, they set off some kind of smoke, uh, in the pipes and actually really just go outside and look and find out where it's coming up out of the ground. So that tells you where leaks are. They also set up flow meters, uh, and what they do is they judge during dry times, they see what your average flow is. And then during the rainy weather, they see how much that flow goes up to see what, how much groundwater you're taking in. Uh, we should expect to know if we get this grant right around the first of the year. The engineer said with the size of our system, we were probably looking at around a hundred thousand dollars to do those two things, the smoke testing and the flow meters. I believe that's correct, isn't it, Drew? Uh, of course, our five percent match would only be five thousand dollars. If it was to go up to the two hundred thousand dollars, what it cost, of course, it would be ten thousand dollars. So that was the max out of our sewer fund on, there's no guarantee that we have, uh, that we have, or that we're going to get that. So, uh, of course, well, like I said, as many grants, we don't know if, uh, when they open, so they're hard to budget for. Sometimes they open, change the menstruation at some other level, state or federal, you know, they may push it off. They may increase the money or reduce the money. So this year it's, it's up to two hundred thousand per utility district or town, so.
Have we ever done a test like this?
I don't know that we've ever done one. Our system's pretty tight, but it's starting to get some age on it. Where they filled the locks in at the side timber loft, where they raised the ground up, we've got a little more water in our system just from that one little, cause there's two manholes there. Raised the ground level up, forced a little more water in our, in our system, so. You know, it's something that we need at a cost, you know, a five percent, you know, maybe five, ten thou, ten thousand dollars is worst case scenario. And what this does, if we go through this step, it's kind of like the, the transportation planning grant we did a few years ago. It allows us to put in for more grants to fix those problems that we have later on. It's kind of a step system. You do this, this, and then you can, you can apply for this later. So with saying that, uh, I'd like to pass this resolution. Like I say, this doesn't say we get it, it's just saying that we're applying for it. Resolution two zero two five zero nine one five, infrastructure planning grant.
Sounds unmuted.
Second. Motion made. And second, uh, any further questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. We'll roll call.
Pastor Mary Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, thank you all for that. Next agenda item is resolution two zero two five zero nine one five oh one. This is hazard mitigation plan. Uh, Sonny Carter is the EMA director and has to update and renew our agree, our agreement to participate in the mitigation plan planning committee. This plan is a requirement with TMA FEMA. Both of these agencies deal with disaster relief, prevention, and force natural disasters. This is something I think we've been to maybe one meeting in the last couple of years. That's all they require us to be at. It was a pretty good sized meeting, me in chief and, well, Drew and Daniel all went at the same time. It was held at the EMA building in Carthage. Uh, but it's just saying that, you know, he's updating his books and we're compliant with what he's got and what TMA FEMA has, uh, has for us to do. I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution, uh, hazard mitigation plan. Second.
Second.
Motion made. And second, any discussion or questions? Uh, in the original packet, it was sent an email. Some of the dates were wrong. We corrected that on the resolution, so.
It's correct in your packet.
Oh, is it the packet too? Okay. Uh, hearing none. We'll roll call.
Pastor Mary Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, meeting date in October. Did y'all decide or do y'all want to get back with us or? October kind of crept up on us. We talked about it earlier in the year and then we kind of.
I'll admit, we'll be any day.
Yeah, this is totally up to you guys. We can make whatever work.
Any day, anytime, so I'll advertise it.
First, you can't be here at the second.
To whichever. Which one do you like better?
I like first Monday myself.
The first Monday?
Yeah.
October the sixth.
October sixth. Is that good with everybody? We'll set that October sixth then, same time. Correct? October sixth, regular time. All right, Councilman Robinson, did you want to revisit the sewer plant rehab project?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, the more I thought about it, I mean, we have bid it out already and we only had two people that showed up and one of the two didn't even find it worth their time to even. Even though it's a lot of money to us and those large construction companies, that's not a lot, that's not that huge of a project. And I, I, I'm not sure what, what advantages we're, we could revisit it back out, but I don't know if we're going to get a bid for this one.
And of course, that's what the, you know, everybody says, well, it could go up, you know, it could go up. I mean, it could go down too, but we just, you know, we just don't know.
And this is the one you said you're hoping to come in at three hundred on?
This was not me. This was our engineer estimates that was hoping to come in at three hundred thousand. Of course, that, that estimate was done, Drew, how long ago would you even guess? Yeah, it's been a while, so. Like I said, we've been dealing with this TDEC grant for twenty, since two thousand twenty one. So, and we're just now finally, we've not stuck a shovel in the ground yet. We're still waiting. Of course, I told most of you that were here, knew that this was a long process. But I think we've got to wrap up. All projects got to be done by two, end of twenty, maybe September, November twenty sixth, but end of two thousand twenty six.
The company that has bid that, we've dealt with them on other projects in the past or?
Now, they've got, they're fixing to start the Highway fifty three project. I've not dealt personally with them. Now, they do a lot of business with the company Wascon that we do business with.
That's the name I was looking for. I just need to.
They're both based out of Livingston, two different companies, but they work a lot together. Uh, Steve Jones, our wastewater engineer, which is out of Nashville, he's, he sent a letter, had no problem with any of the work that they do. Uh, we've worked with them several times. Drew, have you had any dealings with them in your sewer? I, I didn't think so.
How does that happen? I guess, you said the bid was back from twenty two?
That's the estimate.
Estimate, yeah. Nothing goes down.
Yeah. I'm making motion, will you accept?
I'll say that.
Motion made. And second, any further discussion? Now, I will tell you on this, I didn't, let me back up just a minute. There was a, there was a thirty thousand dollars built into that for some unseen things to pop up. We may not have to use that. So that fifty thousand may turn into twenty thousand. That was built into that. Drew, you should have reminded me of that. But that may help ease your thoughts anyway, but I'm sorry, I just want to reveal that. Any question or discussion? Any questions or discussion?
I understand that we're spending $50 on this, then we get this grant, there's another 10 on top of that. But if that's built-in fluff, I feel better about this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll roll call.
That's Mary Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alrighty, that is all the new business that I have. Let me give you an update real quick. Spring Riley Estates, which is Chester, Hatton, Lisa, I've reached out to five or six different contractors. I finally got my first quote Thursday or Friday last week. Actually met with another contractor, supposed to be getting me a quote for the ditching rock project up in that subdivision. Soon as I have that second quote, I say, "We go with it, expect both of them to be under the $15,000 threshold." I did, the first quote I got was right at $9,000. That's just for labor, trucking fees. We'll be on the hook for the rock cost. Of course, we get rock tax-free and get it a little bit cheaper. So, we seen that, you know, it's better for us to buy the rock. I think we have one tile that to replace. Just want to give y'all a quick update. I've had problems with small jobs, not a whole lot of people wanted to bid on them. We've not dropped a ball. I've talked to multiple guys, and they say, "Look, I can get to it in January, February." You know, so, I mean, we're just, you know, it is what it is. But I do expect one of the contractors to give me at least a quote this week. Just want to give you all that update. That's all the new business I have. Is there any old business?
What about Mr. Meadows and trimming the trees up on the hill?
That would be Mr. Green. He's not got back with me. Now, he told me at church here, well, about a month or two ago, that he's not forgot about us. So, I'll send him a text and see where he's at. I know they had a rough spring, early summer with wet weather, so.
Christmas coming up, that's what I'm shooting for.
I'm glad you reminded me of that, Mr. Danny. Any, okay, old business, dry fireworks ordinance. Michael did put this together with what we think we talked about.
Kind of went back and forth so much, the whole lot really didn't change. But I have, this is still a draft, but I have put an ordinance number to it. If you guys want to pass it on first reading, you get this going, we can. If not, we can just let it die, but.
And I reached out to find another municipality draft to see how they were doing. Didn't get it, and then I didn't check back until today.
This one comes from where I came from previously, so that is what they, I don't know what they're doing now, that's what they were using. We're in the process of changing theirs now, but that's where that came.
Yeah, I talked to Carthage City Councilman, and he was inquiring about the same thing. He sent me some emails, and we talked a little bit. I don't know if they actually said theirs or not. I didn't know, I don't know if they said it or not last week or not, so.
But what's in our packet, does it have a change in it?
Definitely. Because it went back and forth so much, it didn't really accomplish much. So, that's why I put an ordinance number to it. If y'all want to do it on first reading, we can. But we need to be a little bit clearer about what you want me to change. Because it kind of went back and forth, and then yes or no's, and I didn't really know what to do, to be honest. I know there's an issue about taking the police oversight out and the change of the dates and stuff, but I don't really remember anything being decided on, so.
I'm fine with the police decision, that's fine. I just want something in there to where that there can be a provision.
And currently, as it is, if you're wanting the mayor to make that decision, that's.
I'm just saying, I want it to be, you've got an organization that does something that is off of that date. They would not be allowed, or the school. I just, if something could be in that to where those are available.
And I think we discussed last time, we can come up with a simple form. I don't think that has to be added to the ordinance. This has not changed any from the existing ordinance. If we just come up, because, I mean, it does state in there unless otherwise directed by the mayor. I have to sign a parade form, so, you know, I don't care to sign a firework form. And I think if y'all know me well enough, I don't want to give everybody, you know, permission to go out there and shoot fireworks to the espousal, but.
No, as long as that's in there, I'm fine. And that, with that statement in there, that would allow them to be able to do that for a ballgame or the organization locally.
And just for him to prove not to come back before you guys, correct?
No.
Okay.
So, who's usually charged with that permit?
I wouldn't think so. It could be a one-page, kind of like the parade, parade permits are. It's just, I think it's just one page and no big deal. Don't think there's a second.
I hate to say it, but the typical ones that are doing it are school or nonprofit organizations, anyone who's organizing those.
So, would that say if just us come up with just a generic form with the mayor, and we go from there? I'm perfectly fine with that. That's what you guys want, so we don't have to pass anything, so that's all in there, correct?
I think so.
We just need to know something when fireworks start going off, we can have a gun charge.
Stacy usually takes control of the parade permit. She gets them to meet, and then she'll go to the chief to make sure that, you know, especially with the parades, that he's got the label bodies here to direct traffic and stuff. So, I don't see it changing. She'd still report to me and you both, so I think that that would be, that would be no problem.
Well, I guess I should have asked that on this, or it would be maybe, there's nothing that we have to do as far as for Halloween bash that needs to take place before. That's already taken care of, and we're good with it. There's nothing that has to come forward.
The council. No, sir. That, we'll actually have a meeting, one meeting, I think, before Halloween, everything else. There shouldn't be anything that we bring in front of the council, unless, you know, the council has the objections to what we're doing, so.
It's a big day for the town. I know it's a lot of work for you all, and police for sure, but we appreciate.
We've been lucky so far, so we're going to keep rolling until we, till we can, so. Anybody else have any old business? Hearing none, there is no audit committee?
Are we going to pass this on first reading or not?
Well, you said it wasn't any changes, correct?
Yeah, but we ain't doing nothing to it.
Is it not the same as our current ordinance?
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
That's the whole point.
We don't?
We don't have a fireworks ordinance.
Okay.
This is brand new.
Let's go back and, can we go back?
Yes. Michael would, it'd probably be better if we put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, I was giving them an option if they wanted to do first readings.
I would probably say put it on next month as a first reading.
And then we can advertise.
If anybody has any objection, they can show up.
Do we need to add permit required or just leave it loose and just advertise?
That's administrative.
Okay. We will advertise a permit and everything with, you know, and tell people, I mean, Shane, you work at school. We can let everybody else know through Facebook and just share it when it comes out. That way people will know. I'm sure we'll have a hiccup first year or two, but after that, everybody's settled, and so. We'll add that to next month's agenda. Any other business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. That's me opposed.